It is 5:30 on December 18th, 2024. I'll call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Buckley, don't see Jackie on yet. Braun, here. Rohr, here. Tomac.
Here.
Wald.
Here.
L.
Here.
I'm here, so we are missing Berger, Buckley, and Zach Meyer. All right, approval of tonight's agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for December 18th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from November 20.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as read.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder for everyone, make sure your mics are turned on. That was a little hard to hear, just for the recording. Thanks.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number one, Natalie.
Our first item tonight is the Ganji variance. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 11, township 135 North, range 79 West. The applicant is Ivan Ganji. This is located in Fort Rice. The property is right here. This is 1806, and then Fort Rice Street, I think they get turned around. They're both Fort Rice. So, as a little background to this application, Mr. Ganji and the county had come to a settlement in 2020 whereby he removed a structure on the property that had not met setbacks. And then, as part of that settlement, it was stated that he would gain full legal use of the property. Staff had asked the question of the State's Attorney's Office back in 2022, what that meant, full legal use, and they had confirmed that full legal use just means it is subject to the same zoning regulations that any other property would be subject to. So, it is a non-conforming property. It happens to be zoned commercial. The minimum lot size for commercial in Morton County is 80,000 square feet or 1.836 acres. The property is .77 acres, which makes it non-conforming. Therefore, a variance is required to build a structure on the lot, and so Mr. Ganji is submitting that variance. His intention is to build a 63 by 40-foot post-frame structure and have a parking lot, and the use on the property would be a used car sales business. So, that's the background. The current zoning, so there's a bar to the north of the subject property that is operating. This is a conforming commercial lot. This is commercial. Everything else that you see in yellow is zoned residential. This is ag. Everything around is ag, and then this is limited open space being core land. So, have the site plan up there. It's a little hard to see. So, this would be the building. This would be the parking lot. In Morton County, in the land use code, our parking requirements are based on which proportion of the interior space will be public-facing versus non-public-facing. I got conflicting information from the applicant, so hopefully, maybe that will be clarified, which portions of those will be public versus non-public. I guess, as far as the parking goes, they have 10 spaces on there at most. They would have to add two more at most. So, parking, I think, should be able to fit on there fine regardless of what's inside the structure. There is a plan for a septic tank. There would be one restroom in the building, so very minor plumbing situation, so they would just have one drain field run that would be along their building setback, basically. So, that'd be a 100-foot run there. Western Plains Public Health reviewed the site plan and said they thought that septic situation was adequate. The applicant had planned on using Missouri West Water and getting an account with them. Missouri West Water is very, access is very, very limited in this part of the county. It is not likely that the applicant could get an account with Missouri West Water. In that case, they would have to put a well in. The requirement for distancing for a well would be 100 feet from any septic tank or drain field, so that would be possible on this lot, but would be, you'd have to really figure out where to put it. So, the applicant provided a letter of hardship, which is in your packet. That was published online. The main reason that he listed was financial losses due to limited scope of the business, due to not having a shop for repair work, and being able to build this shop for repair work would correct that hardship. I did provide to each of you the list of criteria that the county uses, that's in the land use code, to evaluate for approval of variances. Generally, those are geographic in nature or having something to do with the terrain or geography of the lot that creates a hardship that would be experienced by the applicant as opposed to any other landowner in the vicinity. So, staff's recommendation, staff is recommending denial of the variance. The lot is less than half the size of a conforming commercial lot, and although the applicant said in his letter of hardship that he intends to operate in harmony with the surrounding community, he will not own the property forever. Once a building is there, other uses can take hold there, and in staff's estimation, it's just too small of a lot for that intensity of use. The minimum lot requirement has something to do with not only providing adequate space for all of the uses that are allowable under the commercial zoning, but also have a bit more of a distancing buffer built in. Technically, the way they have this laid out, it does, it can meet building setback requirements, but it is still, again, in staff's estimation, too intensive a use for this location. So, with that, I can take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, on the original ground, that whole, that one area is kind of reddish, except for...
Should I go back to that?
Well, is that, Mr. Ganji's, the whole lot? Everything in red is his?
Nope. Nope.
Why's the purpose? Why is the other part red there?
So, this, this is the zoning map for this whole area, just to show what the zoning is of the subject property and everything around it. So, Mr. Ganji's property is outlined in this lighter color. Are you able to see that?
I see it, no, is it?
So, that's Mr. Ganji's property. This is a separate owner. It's a completely separate piece of property up here, under separate ownership. They just happen to both be zoned commercial.
Oh, okay. So, they're both, they're both zoned commercial then?
Correct. Yep. And this, this has a bar, a functioning bar and restaurant? Yeah, bar and restaurant, right there.
Okay.
Other questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. So, if you can flip back to the, yeah, that's the one, the site, the site plan sketch, sorry. There's, there's no plat in the, in the packet.
Right. Yeah, that's a very good point as well.
Is one to assume then that these lines are platted?
So, that, that's a really good point. Generally, we do not allow building permits on auditor's lots, and that's what this is. So, I guess the request would be to just be able to build the structure as is. Generally, we do require plating for structures to be built.
So, it has not been?
It has not been platted, correct.
So, we don't know for sure that these corners are 100% correct?
I think, and I guess is, I guess maybe the applicant can speak to that. Their engineer did lay out this site plan, so it's possible that in so doing, he found property corners. I don't have an answer to that, but maybe the applicant can speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, when it talks about reconstruction, I presume that this is not new construction?
It would be new construction. So, the, there, there had been a structure on the, on the lot. The applicant was compelled to remove it. He said that he preserved the steel beams and girders from the old building and would like to repurpose those if they are, he would have a builder assess the quality of those and repurpose those, but the rest of the construction materials would be new.
It's not a remodel job at all.
Right, and I actually, I will put up pictures of the site. They're in your packet, but I will put them on the overhead so that everybody can see them. So, this is the approach, like, if you're looking at the site plan, it shows an approach. This is the approach. This is looking north. There are a number of semi-trailers and this trailer, and then an RV, so it's just open. These are not permanent structures. They're trailers that are situated on the property without, you know, not, not, they don't have a foundation. So, there's no structures on the property. And that's just from a little bit different angle, so passing the approach and then looking back towards 1806, again, a number of semi-trailers and a trailer and a RV on the other side. And you can see, so that's the bar and restaurant on the parcel that's just directly north of this subject property.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, in the application, the parking lot, is that to be paved or disgravel or what?
So, crushed asphalt. We, we do require surfacing of some kind for parking lots. Land use code has that requirement. We don't require hard surfacing. The applicant was going to use crushed asphalt, which is an acceptable material.
Natalie, can you go back to the site plan? Do you have, can you provide some context on the surfacing? I guess the site plan's a bit unclear to me, what, like, what is going to be crushed asphalt? What?
And that would, yes, that would be a good thing to clarify with the applicant when they speak. I apologize that I did not get that information. My assumption, even though I shouldn't assume, would be continuing the apron and then that anything in here, the aisle and the stalls would be all surfaced.
Right, the apron, it make, like, it's non-functioning, the way that the stalls are laid out with the aprons.
Correct. This should probably move over. That should probably move over. It's a little strange that you would have your door, your overhead doors for vehicles to come in and out to be oriented in this direction. You know, if you didn't pave that somehow, I guess, to get in there. The customer entrance is over here, even though the parking's over there. So, those would be questions for the applicant to, to explain how that would work out.
Yeah, I guess maybe a question for you or for us. I mean, with a variance request like this, what information do we require? Is a site plan part of the requirement? And does this meet that threshold?
So, what we ask for in a variance request really depends on the nature of the variance request, and we certainly can attach conditions. You know, if we're approving a variance, we can't, if we don't have the detail available, but we want to, we want the applicant to meet a certain standard, performance standard, we can attach those conditions to approval of a variance. You know, so if we want to delineate where we would like the paving to go and the extent of the paving, that's something that we can attach as a condition to any approval.
And I'm not suggesting we should dictate where it goes, but to process the request, it would be helpful to understand where it's planned to go.
Yes.
And a lot of that is unclear.
Unclear.
We can...
Correct.
Move on and see if some of it gets addressed.
Yep.
Other questions for Natalie, and Natalie, maybe switch back to online. Jackie or Becky, any questions for Natalie?
Uh, I think I'm good.
I'm good for now. I guess I just want to hear the applicant, hear what he has to say, and then I might add a question. Jesse?
Sounds good, Jackie. Okay, any other questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll give the applicant the opportunity to speak first, applicant or representatives.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if you can remind people online to unmute themselves at that, at whatever point we get there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm Chris Niasse. I'm representing Ivan Ganji. I'm assuming many of you know Ivan, and he will, he will address a lot of your specific questions. I think it's important with this to understand a little bit of the history that's gone on with this particular lot and how, how we came to be here with this variance request. So, my understanding, now, I was not involved when any of this that I'm going to tell you happened, all right? But I'm here to try to help solve the problem for Ivan and hopefully for the county so we can move forward. So, Ivan bought this property, and in 2010, he was granted a building permit to put up a building on this specific lot and operate his auto dealership. And I brought that with today, if any of you, any of you want to see it. It was issued in September of 2010. So, having an auto dealership on this lot is not a new thing, okay? What happened, to my understanding, is that the place operated probably up till 2015, maybe a little longer. There was a cease and desist order that was issued because it turned out that despite the issuance of this building permit, the property, the building, not the property, but the building itself overlapped onto what I believe was an unvacated alley. Is that correct, Ivan?
Yes, I believe.
So, there was an overlap onto a public space. All right, now, if I could put up this map again, it's over here. I was just going to show where, where the highway runs. So, so this property's right by the highway, and this, my understanding is the highway was rerouted at some point. That's why you have these odd-shaped lots. And so, Ivan had come in, he owns the lot on the southern end of the commercially zoned area of Fort Rice, and he operated his dealership there. So, he ended up having to shut down the building and demolish the building, and he ended up reaching an agreement with Morton County. I believe the, I believe it was Mr. Grossinger that was negotiating on behalf of the county and Mr. Polkerebeck on behalf of Mr. Ganji at the time, neither of whom are, are involved in any of this any longer. And so, we're stuck to have some institutional knowledge, hopefully, of what led to the problem. So, there ended up being a settlement agreement, and Mr. Copy can address the commission if he so chooses, but the very last line of this settlement agreement, now, settlement agreements obviously don't come around because everybody's happy, all right? They're negotiated result. And the settlement agreement at the end of it says, and I'm summarizing, after Ivan takes the building down, he can have full legal use of, of this property. But, you know, I don't want you to think that there's never been an auto dealership here before, because there has been. And the problem was not with the auto dealership. The problem was with the location of that building at the time. The problem was not with the square footage of his lot. Those are all newly created problems that we all came here to solve. So, we figure a variance is the easiest way to solve this problem, because right now, you saw the pictures. The pictures show the trailer on the lot.
Yes, I can orient it. Yeah, there you go.
And I think the previous one showed, showed a semi-trailer. That's not an ideal location to operate a used car dealership, right? At all. It, it's temporary facility. And, and the true, the true problem, the true hardship here is that that's not sustainable. Ivan's at the end of the grace period that he has with the DOT. Okay, they, they know that this hearing's going on, and this is going to shut down his dealership, and that is the substantial hardship that's going to result if he doesn't get the variance. Okay? I've negotiated graciously. They've, they've allowed this to continue, okay? When I read that settlement agreement, Ivan's expectation that he gets the full use, full legal use of his property after he does what he says he's supposed to, was a $30,000 payment that he received from the county, because the county shouldn't have given him the, the building permit. That was, that was the back and forth on that. So, they've resolved it. $30,000 payment to Ivan to get rid of the building, raise it. He had full intent to rebuild within the confines of the lot. And so, now, he finds out that there's a gotcha, snuck, snuck in, not necessarily in the agreement, but in the application of it. Okay, and so, that's why we're here. None of us here created this problem. Okay, Ivan's the one that's suffering. Now, you probably hear some, well, if you look at the report and the recommendations of Ms. Pierce, there are some community concerns in there, and, and I want to caution the Planning and Zoning Commission to not rely on a couple of those, because I think that they're, they're improper. They don't come from Ms. Pierce, okay? She's merely reporting community concerns. Ivan, in his letter, in his hardship letter, tells the commission that a lot of his business comes from the Standing Rock Reservation. I mean, he's right there on the border. And on paydays, it's busier. And that's been represented by Ivan in response to questions about how busy is this going to be, all right? So, Ivan's representation to Ms. Pierce in a phone call that I was on is, well, a couple days, it's probably going to be about 50 people coming and going. That's a reasonable expectation, twice a month, first and 15th. Other times, there's probably going to be, I think the number he said was six, six customer calls into this facility. That is not a heavy use. This thing is right by, right by the highway. It's not like people are going to be driving through town to get to the dealership. I mean, it's, it's one of two commercial operations in Fort Rice. I think it's improper if this commission were to rely on, it's in the report, there's, there's a concern that the dealership will attract clientele that people don't want. Please don't rely on that, okay? Good people of this commission, that's not a concern, that's, that's viable or legitimate. Bottom line is, having a dealership in Fort Rice is going to bring in sales tax to Morton County. He's, he's hamstrung by what he can do out of this trailer. It's not a good situation, and would you rather be looking at trailers on that lot or would you rather be looking at a newly constructed building? He's willing to put up the building. He's already footed the bill for the new building. It's there. He would like permission to put it up. You know, I do want to read the concerning comment. And I don't want to grandstand on it, but I do want to point it out. So, public outreach, it's on page three of your packet. "There were concerns about the impact of a used car sales business on a residential neighborhood. I don't think those concerns are going to be very large because you're not driving through a residential neighborhood to get there." Last sentence, under the public outreach sentence, says, "They were concerned that they do not want the traffic and the clientele the business would attract coming to Fort Rice." That, that's an improper consideration. We've had, we've had this operating before, and now, the property was not in a great condition when it was ordered to be taken down. It wasn't. I mean, you don't get to that situation by, by having a cleaned-up property. Ivan had to clean it up, and he will, and he did. He, he did. He took down the building. He did everything that the settlement agreement required, absolutely everything. Otherwise, he wouldn't have received the payment. So, we're here today. He's represented in his hardship letter. He will follow every other requirement that the county has. And if he doesn't, you guys will no, no doubt hear about it, but this business existed there before, and it's limping through right now, and to deny it is going to kill it. Now, you know, I, I hope that there are no unstated desires here. I hope, I hope that people don't want to deny this because it's Ivan Ganji, okay? He deserves a fair shake. He went through the legitimate legal processes to tear down that thing, and he's going through the legitimate processes to put it back up, okay? I do have a couple other points I'd like to make, but at this point, are there any questions?
Yeah, Chris, I, I guess I, I have a couple. Anybody else? Questions for Chris?
Yes.
So, I guess, Chris, and maybe it is in our packet, and I didn't catch it, but you've been referencing that it's currently functioning as this dealership with those structures, trailers, functioning as the facility? Is that the?
It, it is limping through. You need to have a location for the Department of Transportation to issue...
I guess that, that was going to be my other question.
That has been the permitted, permitted location with the DOT.
What, what is it that is being permitted by the DOT? I guess I'm not following along with that.
A dealership. A car dealership.
Okay.
A sale, yeah, retail sales dealership.
The North Dakota DOT permits car dealerships?
Yes, it does. And you need to have a physical location. You need to have, you need to have a brick and mortar, and he's been granted grace by the DOT to allow, to continue to limp through with trailers, and he needs a building up, and he needs to put the building up that he was forced to take down previously.
Okay, just, I guess, so from my own understanding, don't deal with car dealerships. So, I guess, to my original question, is this functioning as a car dealership today?
My understanding is there is a dealership license issued to that location by the DOT already, and I'll, I'll ask Ivan to confirm.
But are there functionally vehicles being sold?
I don't believe vehicles are stored there. I will defer to Ivan. He'll take the mic. I think that's a fair question for him.
Okay.
But I wanted to address some of these things first.
Okay. Well, you, you made the comment about those being temporary facilities for the car dealership.
Yep.
So, I guess that sparked my curiosity.
Yeah, it's weird.
I mean, it appears, it appears weird in the, in the pictures.
It is.
I mean, I assume there's, nobody's forcing that situation, right? I mean, it looks, it looks more like a salvage yard.
The dealership existed previous before the building, before the building had to be torn down. That's my understanding. And so, to be able to continue it and maintain that dealer's license, it's had to operate out of a physical... out of a physical location. That, and that's the location, that's on the license application. And the DOT is fully aware of the situation where it's located, is my understanding.
Okay. No, and I guess that, that makes sense to me, Chris, about the DOT. I'm just remain a little unclear about what, if those structures are functioning as, as like office space to run, that's what you suggested, so I'm just trying to understand.
That's my understanding, and I will defer to Ivan on that. I think clarity is required.
Alright, fair enough, yeah.
But just know that that, it, the business has continuity all the way through. From before the building was tore down, it still has the license tied to that lot.
Okay. And, yeah, maybe if Ivan can provide better context than...
Ivan, why don't you go ahead and clarify this issue?
Hi, guys, gals. When I took the building down, settled the case with the county, I didn't feel an opportunity to build a building right away, because I was involved with Ron Nybar. He rented from me when I owned a Crescent Printing building downtown Mandan before the diesel spill. So I helped him and I financed him to build a building out by Crow's Kitchen. So I located my dealership there. And I didn't feel the need to go to Fort Rice. So Ron died, or, you know, and so the kids sold the property. We had some problems there, and they sold the property. So I have a camper down there, a fifth wheel, and I had Moore Grand Sioux put in electricity and the security light, and I pay Moore Grand Sioux every month. And George Gardner, I paid him 50 to 100 bucks a month, and he maintained it, watched it, and stuff like that. I didn't mow it like I was supposed to, but, and I cleaned it up and everything like that. And I had cars there, and I cleaned them up. But, so now I have till the first. If I don't get the variance and stuff like that, then my dealership goes away. But I have a functioning dealership. Prior to getting the permit in 10, I owned the Fort Rice Bar. Through some problems with Bendish and Jimmy Castillo and George Gardner and the State Tax Department, I lost it at the Supreme Court. So that's why I don't want to have the bar, and that's why I need to move over there. And my dealership was at the bar. I used the front, which they tore down now, and that's where I had my dealership.
Does that give some clarity and some history?
Yeah, I guess I don't mean that it matters for this, but, you know, I guess I'm still unclear on the continuity of a dealership in that location, but I don't, I don't know if it's that relevant. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me at this point.
It is weird, but it's when operating, and that's, that's the location that the DOT understands that it operates from, and it previously operated from there.
Okay.
So, anyway, that, that's my understanding of things. I guess I want to take a minute, and you guys are very well, well aware of what the variance requirements are. There's the seven or eight factors. I think this ticks every one of the boxes. I really do. This is a hardship that is substantially gonna fall only on the shoulders of Ivan. I don't think that this, merely having a dealership there causes a problem, okay? I don't think, I don't think having, you know, between five to 50 people come through the dealership a couple times a month is really gonna put a big onus on the residential nature of Fort Rice. Other people may think differently, but I don't, I don't think it will. A retail automotive is a permitted use under the counting, county zoning ordinances. It's permitted use in a commercial zone. And now, obviously, this lot has square footage issues. So that's really what we should be talking about, is square footage stuff, not should it be a dealership, or should it be a greenhouse, or should it be any other type of permitted-by-right business. So whether it's a dealership really isn't the sole issue that you guys should be considering, in my opinion, because it's a permitted use in a commercial spot. So focusing specifically on the building. There were some questions about what's gonna be paved, what's going to be surfaced. I believe it is going to be crushed asphalt. And if you look over here. And Ivan mentioned to me that it's going to be all along here as well. So driving into the bays, it'll be crushed asphalt. He's represented to me that it's probably gonna be 10 cars in a rotating inventory. It's not going to be a huge car lot. So there's been a substantial amount of back and forth on the engineering side of this with Ms. Pierce's office. There's been multiple versions bounced back and forth. When questions were asked, we went back to Ron Manchester of Toma, Toma Engineering, and he made edits, he made recommendations, and this is the result. I was, I was surprised to see a recommendation to denial, for denial, based solely on the, on the sketch, because I think we, we were able to come up with a plan that works, if you're looking solely at the building. So at this point, if there's any other questions for me, I'd field them. Otherwise, if Ivan wants to take the mic, that's fine with me, too.
Any other question, questions for Chris? And Natalie, can we switch it back so that Becky and Jackie can jump in?
Mr. Chair, I did have one clarifying question. Mr. Gange did mention he needs a permit by the first, so by the first of January?
My understanding is that the DOT, if he gets the variance and he constructs the building, my understanding is they will work with him so that his dealer license can continue. He has renewed the license for yet another year, is my understanding. The DOT, like I said, has given a lot of leeway and grace while this, while these designs were passed back and forth, and while we bring it to you guys for the variance consideration. But if, if there's no variance, his dealership's in jeopardy.
So he does not need to have this all done by the first of January?
Yes, yeah, I do believe he has to have it by the first. However, based on my discussions with the Department of Transportation's Licensing Division, they're, they're merely monitoring this. They could come down with a hard hammer if they wanted to. There is a risk of that. And say, no, you don't have it by the first, you're done.
So, and he also has to have a building built by the first, or just the variance?
Again, if he has the variance in hand, and indicates that come spring, there'll be construction, I don't, I don't foresee that being a problem. I can't speak for the DOT, but all the correspondence that I've had with him indicates they're willing to work with him as long as he gets clearance for the variance. So I guess I want to, unless there's other questions.
Well, I guess, Chris, we keep talking a lot about this, this DOT. Is this like something that is a challenge to acquire if it expires, takes years to get a new one? I, I just don't, I don't know if I'm following along with that connection and how...
It's a dealer license. I've never had to deal with people who have lost it and had to reacquire it. Okay? I can tell you that there are several people who I'm aware of in the state who have DO, have dealerships, and those plate, those dealer plates are pretty important. It, it's important to be able to transport vehicles. So if you don't have that, you can't use dealer plates. You have license requirements that fall. So I can tell you, it causes a lot of problems if you don't have it.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah. And, and there are some physical requirements to have a dealership in the state. And my understanding is these would suffice as long as the variance is granted. And so if there's other concerns that arise about maintenance of property or nuisance style issues, this commission is, and the full commission is fully equipped to deal with those. But I think merely whether to grant a variance should solely be on building size, not should this be a dealership. Because I think it's a permitted, permitted use under, under the zoning code, and he had the right to rely on the fact that he would be able to put the building back up, because it was pre-existing. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for being here to help solve this problem.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep. Ivan? Are there questions for Ivan?
Any questions for Ivan?
Not this time.
Alright, now, thanks, Ivan.
Ivan, do you want to address the commission?
Jesse?
Yeah, yeah, Jackie.
I guess I'm wondering, the parking spaces, is that for customers? That are to the, would be to the, is it to the E?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, it just takes a minute. There you go.
Well, I don't know, Jackie, can you still talk?
She can't talk.
Okay. That's okay. It's a goofy setup.
Yeah. There we go.
So Jackie, we, we tried to switch it over to the projector and lost you. So you were asking about the 10, 10 parking stalls beside the building?
Yep. Okay, so I assume that's for the customers, but I guess I'm wondering, where is he going to park the cars that are being worked on? Is that the plan to be?
Or sold, right, Jackie? Is that...
Yeah, or sold. Where are they going to go? And if we were to prove it, is there a way to, like, limit the number of cars that are gonna stay there? What happens if a customer doesn't pay for their, their bill? How long are, can we say anything about how long cars would be parked there? I mean, we don't want it to turn into a junkyard.
You can address this. I'm gonna defer to Ivan for the response. Go ahead.
Uh, no, ma'am, it is gonna be a junkyard. What I'm anticipating is, I sell very, very seldom myself to the public where I need to put in 20, 30 cars. I usually keep five to 10. I keep around 200 cars right now at Kennel, South Dakota. So my junk cars or my repossessed cars, they're being held down there, and then I have a place in Washburn, I put them on a farm. So there is no junk there. There was junk there, and I crushed it and moved it, but, I mean, I build, I've been in Morton County forever. I own Gange Properties, I work with the city, I have 10, 20 rentals, and I always obey the laws that the city and the government puts out. I always go through an attorney, and I, whatever you guys decide for the law and for what you need from me, you'll have it. Or it's just the way I do business. I'm not gonna do business because the public wants this, or hates me for this, or that. I don't care about the public. I don't need the public. What I need is an understanding with the officials that if you check my records, I've always did what I was supposed to do according to the law. And I do it today. Building permits for sheds, or whatever I need to do.
So Ivan, just maybe to build on Jackie's question, make sure we clarify that. So the 10 parking stalls that are shown, the intent is that those would be used for customer parking and parking of the vehicles that are for sale? Is that...
The parking on the vehicles for sale would be out front. I'd leave that row for the... See, the parking, if you could get a picture up of the lot for me?
Jackie, we're gonna switch back to the projector, so we'll, we'll come back to you if you want to ask more questions. What's that, Jackie?
I, I guess I want to know what, where the parking is supposed to be for everything.
Okay, we're gonna switch to the projector and try to point that out, okay?
Oops, sorry, gotta get it. There we go. Okay, no, no, point out where the, like, vehicle parking would be, so Jackie can see it. Maybe I'll draw, because we might want to look at...
I won't.
Yeah, just point.
This is customer parking. Parking for the rest of the cars, if I need one, I'd be over here and on the front. There's room on the back. Let the road separate. The, can you bring up a picture of the property where the approach is, so I can show you something?
Yeah, that's tough, but...
Know where the trailers are.
Oh, we got those. Want that one?
No, I want the other one. Okay, this, this property, this comes off Fort Rice Street, and this goes into my property and goes through the property into the bar. That's a private road. So that road goes, and on the side over here where you see this little shed setting, where I'm pointing to, that's where all the parking would go for the public. And then the other parking is down on this end for my cars. I probably have anywhere from five to 10 cars for sale, and you're lucky if you have, exception of payday, you're lucky if you have six, seven cars there a day, coming and going. And they just pass through, they drop off their payments, or ask what's going on, or maybe order a car, and then they go on into Mandan Walmart. So, that's all I can tell you.
Are there any other questions for, for Ivan on this?
Natalie, if you can jump back, just make sure Jackie doesn't have any follow-ups.
So I'm looking at my map of the lot and the building plan, then. Go to the south. They won't be parking there on the asphalt. And you won't be, will there be parking on the, it'll be the west side of the building?
This is mine. This, yeah, so this is what, this is...
How far away do you have to stay from the, the highway?
So Jackie, this is Natalie. You can't park in the right-of-way. We don't have specific limitations about parking, you know, on non-paved areas on lots. We do have limitations for residential zone, ag zone, but we don't have limitations on number of vehicles in a commercial zone. So as long as you're not in the right-of-way, we don't have a limitation on those.
Okay.
And I guess one other thing I'd like to add to that is, I also don't think there's a prohibition on transient parking in a setback area as opposed to a right-of-way, because you have the highway on the west side, you have a setback on the south side. Is that your understanding, Natalie?
Okay.
Done. Any other questions?
Anything else for Chris or Ivan? And maybe we'll have more.
Sure. Well, if, if anything arises, we're willing to come back up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? If so, please come to the mic and state your name.
My name is Pauline Wise, formerly Eisenberg. I own the Fort Rice Bar and Grill. Gange had claimed that he owns the building from 2012, 2010 and doing business. My late husband purchased that business on December of 2012, so there was no car lot from then. I take over the bar in 2018, and to the south, to the south of me, where he have his lot, there was a whole bunch of junk. Yes, he did clean it up. My, he did. He did clean, he did clean, he did tear down, like, the building as he said, he did. And that, it was better. My concern as a bar owner with, if he's not gonna do a legit business there and bring in a bunch of junk cars just for storage, that's not gonna make, that look good for my business. And as far as what everybody's saying, he's, he wants to put a bunch of junk vehicle down there. And if the county have already paid him to clean up the junk, why pay him again to put it back and to clean it up back again? I just don't want anything to let me lose my customer. I don't want the junk to let me lose my customer. If he's up to do a legit business, more power to him. But the junk, I just don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no problems with your comment.
I have no problems with your comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dan Bohi. I was on the south side of the Fort Rice Street there, on the south side of Maine there. And, you know, we talked, we're talking about some history here. Well, let's do some history. Originally, this land was owned by George Gartner. It was recreational and everything else. Then all of a sudden, boom, it gets turned into commercial. Cause nobody was notified that it was gonna be changed or anything else. Not like you guys do today. You guys send out letters and everything else. No one knew about that. If it was redone right now, I would guarantee you it would still be recreational. Cause nobody would allow this. You know, that was, that's the first step there. And in the old building he had there, I mean, I don't have my pictures with or anything else, but on the east side of the building, there's no wall. There's no wall there at all. On the west side, where the garage doors are supposed to be, that was wide open. So it wasn't really put together all the way either. And then the cars they had there, I mean, that one time I count thirty-two cars. And not one of them ran. They were junk piles. And then some of them were just burnt out. And I watched them unload these vehicles. You know, they brought them, they would bring them in on flatbeds and stuff like that. I've never seen one roll off a flatbed. Every car I saw was either pushed off or dragged off. And I don't think, I don't think he had a running vehicle in there. Except once, I seen him once, he backed up on the approach and he sat in his van and let it run. That's only, actually the only running vehicle, I think he was trying to sell or not. I'm not too sure about that. Okay. Now, the situation, I'd like to...
Could you put that one up, this one up? This would be okay, right there.
Okay.
Is this the one you want?
Yeah. Yeah, that would work, yeah. Okay. Now, what this map doesn't show, that you got eighteen oh six here. Okay, about in this area, you got two thirty-six inch, two thirty-six inch culverts that drain thousands and thousands of square feet, I mean acres of water. That, so that comes, that goes underneath eighteen oh six. And then approximately in this area here, that goes underneath Fort Rice Street, there's two thirty-six inch culverts right there also. Now that water comes right through this property. And this is kinda like a retention basin or backup. The water backs up. Cause there's only two thirty-six inch culverts that tries to handle that water. I've seen that water go probably all the way up to here. That's where the old building, it used to get into the old building. That water used to back up that much. Because there's only, especially during the spring runoff, when one of those thirty-six inch culverts are flood, you know, plugged up with ice. Now you got, you know, now you only got one culvert trying to drain this, all this whole area where that water goes. Now there's a approach here that has no culvert or anything else to reclaim, like relieve that pressure. So, I mean, you could say, well, we'll put a culvert underneath there. Only problem with that is further down the ditch, there's only a fourteen inch culvert. So you, I mean, you can't put anything buried in there cause you'll flood out the people downstream of it. So, you know, that's a really bad flooding issue. So, so you guys allow him to build this building and everything. This water floods this building out. And then you guys get a telephone call in the middle of the night. Hey, you told me I could put my building in there. And now you gotta pay for my building cause it's flooding out. Well, that sounds familiar. Well, geez, you told me I could put my building in the middle of the street, but now you gotta pay me. So either way, that's, that's, water cannot get out of there that fast. Simply put. Okay. And then the next thing I'd like to address is parking lots where he's gonna show us cars and everything. I notice this blank area right here, like, it's like eight thousand square feet. Well, to support this building here, that, you know, he's gonna bring in cars, fix it, and then, you know, put it on for sale over here. He's gonna need some salvage, he's gonna need parts, salvage and everything else to fix these cars. Well, where's he gonna get from? He's gonna have them stockpiled over here to build, to put the cars together here, then sell them. Simply put, this is just not gonna be an empty. He's gonna be putting wrecked vehicles, salvageable materials on there so he can do his business. So there will be some kind of junkyard there. And that's all it's gonna look like. And then, the other thing I'd like to address, I'm a plumber. I've been plumbing for thirty-five years. I did septic tanks, I worked on them, I revamped them and fixed them and everything else. He's got a drain field up here, I see, hundred and ten feet drain field. Well, you know, like the purpose of having at least acre and a half of land is if this drain field fails, which they do sometimes, there's always, you got another acre, you know, another acre or so to move it. If that fails, where are you gonna put it? So, you know, there's no backup plan there. I don't see, where's he gonna start moving that stuff at? And then, like to, you know, this building's only what, forty feet from the, that's from the right-of-way? Well, you know, that speed limit there is sixty-five miles an hour. You car, you got a car leaving that vehicle, leaving that, you know, leaving the road at sixty-five, that's gonna do some damage to that building. Or, you know, that, when people are in the car and hit that building, it's gonna do more damage to them also. Or if they got, he's got cars sitting out there for sale, it's the same thing. So it's, I mean, that should be further back or something. That's why I'm trying to get there too. And then, so that's about, can't think of anything else I'd like to... Yeah, I'd like to say with the culverts in the, in the... Especially the flooding. That is, I mean, that's, why would you, and that is a, and that fills up that one time. That one time, it filled up so much, he had a, like a camper sitting here, one of those tow behind campers. I actually seen that thing float down twenty-five feet cause the water got so high. You go down there right now, you see where those trailers were sitting and everything? They're, they're sunk into the ground because they've been sitting in water, you know, during the spring runoff and everything. And that's just not during the spring runoff. We get three inches of rain, there's good, that water comes through there. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't come underneath there, take a ninety, it comes this way, take another ninety, another ninety. No, it goes, water takes its easiest course. And this is the easiest course it takes. It does not drain off all the way. So, you know, that's, that's gonna be a really bad thing there, I think. And then, you know, I wish I had the picture of the old building cause you guys would see, hey, that was not even close to... He had a sign on the side, that's for sure. But he had no vehicles out there for sale and stuff like that, in a nice little row or anything. He might have some, you know, from, you know, from word of mouth stuff, but that's about it. So, yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, and let's say he, you guys, I'd grant this, it's what, three quarters of an acre, right? Okay, I, you know, I own about one, two, with my brother, one, two, three, maybe about four, four and a half acres down there. Okay, so I can start building stuff on three quarters of acre then, right? I mean, if Ganges can do it on one side of the road, why can't do it on the other side? I mean, that'd be, that'd be great. But right now, you know, I was informed, you can't do that. You have to meet that minimum requirement of one and a half acres or so, about that, I think it is. So, and then, you know, to me, and, you know, I mean, Mr. Ganges says he's got other places that he's got, down the kennel and up by north of there, underneath Washburn or whatever. Well, why doesn't he go up there and stuff like that? You know, so just bringing it down here where, you know, where there's very little room. You know, I don't know how much room he's got in these other places, but it's gotta be a lot more than that little three quarters of acre there. So, yeah, so, yeah, there's a, yeah, I... So that's about, I think that's the only thing I can really contest to here, so... But, but yeah, I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be almost, you know, another nightmare again. I really do. Because it, he's like, he just, to make this building work, you're gonna need parts and everything else. You have to. And he's not gonna, you know, to go out, buy brand new parts to old vehicles and then try to resell them at a price? Well, good luck with that. You know, it's, I mean, they don't really, yeah, I mean, you're never, you'll never get your price back on that. You need to fix old cars with old junk almost. So, so I think, I think that's about the only thing I got to say so far, so...
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Dawn Heck. I'm resident down in Fort Rice for about twenty years. I basically grew up down there. All of my life of fifty-some years, there was always junk to clean up. Why do we have to repeat this? Why is Fort Rice a junkyard? That's what's gonna happen. It happened before, it's gonna happen again. The only reason he cleaned up what he had is cause he was paid. Why would clean it up too? I took offense to the certain clientele that might drive through there because that's where we live. We're not a reservation, but those are our people too. And I think that's just a sidetrack to whatever. I just, yeah, it's, it's not a car sales business, it's a junkyard. That's what it'll be. And like Dino said, he's gonna start building stuff on the opposite side because I guess we can do that. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Hi, my name's Sharon Ullman. I'm from Fort Rice. I'm a legacy family. I have watched nothing but junk grow down there for years. My grandmother's still rolling her grave for trying to get this stuff cleaned up. And now we're gonna add to it. Why would we believe that he would uphold any variance that he has not in the past practiced? You guys paid him thirty grand to clean it up. He still has junk down there. He had people living down there, he was charging to live down there in campers, fifth wheels or whatever you wanna call them. We can't do this. This is where we live. This is our paradise. This is our city, I mean, our, I guess it's not a city, but our place we live and we love. We don't want this anymore. We're trying to clean it up. We've lost George. Now we're trying to get more folks down here to junk it up more. And we can't have it. Yeah, it is something we have to deal with and conform with, but please y'all, help us clean our community up. And that's all I'm gonna say. And thank you for listening. And hopefully, we don't go down this path any longer and we can clean it up. So thank you.
Thanks Sharon.
Commissioners, my name is Dawn Wise, I, Pauline, my wife. And I have the property to the north, the bar property.
Did you say Dawn?
Dawn, yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, I just wanted to reiterate what Dan said about that drainage. That is, I've been in the construction business for many years and mostly in the earthwork. And I see the problem, exactly what he's talking about. And unless there's a substantial amount of work done to the property, you know, I just, and like it was mentioned earlier, if you grant this variance and he gets a building permit and all this, and then this happens, and then there's damage to his building, he's gonna get to pay for that again, just exactly what was, what was mentioned. I guess that's mainly what I wanted to say. Of course, if it does go through, we would absolutely hope there would be a fence, you know, between this, this car lot or property and our property because there would be potential for driving through this area, this lot, right onto ours again. We've been broken into once so far, the two and a half years I've been down there. And it's, it wasn't a good experience. The other thing, and last thing I wanna say is we've been trying to hopefully get a rural water line for the last two and a half years. It's not gonna happen. We keep getting shut down. It's just overtaxed now. So there will be no rural water line to this property. I, I hope not because we've been asking for one and they, it's not gonna happen. The only other question I had for Ms. Pierce was this, the forty-foot setback from the right-of-way property to the, this dashed line, I don't know what that represents, but, I mean, he's able to bring crushed asphalt into that setback, correct?
So, I'm gonna speak here so everybody can hear me. So the question was, can he bring crushed asphalt into the setback? And yes, you can. The setback is a building setback. So that's what, so this dashed line, which, so it'd be this. This dashed line is showing the property setbacks just as a visual, so that you can see it visually where the line is where you would have to set any building back. But pavement, landscaping, parking a car, that can happen in the setback as long as there's no building, like a permanent structure in the setback.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your time. That's all I have on us.
Thanks Dawn.
Yeah, I'm Dan again. I'd just like to bring up something. We have some other people that came down here, Fort Rice, maybe two years ago, and they wanted to put a repo yard in, you know, and bring cars down. And they were only on three, three little lots. And they moved in with a camper and lived in a camper and everything, you know, with no sewer out, no nothing. And, you know, I told Natalie about it and talked to some commissioners. And what the deal was, well, they don't have the power. They don't have the bite to, you know, close things down or do, to deal with stuff. You know, cause since we're in, we're not incorporated, you know, of course, you're in Mandan or something, yeah, you're gonna, you know, they got more power and more bite. You know, they can shut, you know, they could shut Ganges down if he didn't do stuff, crackaway or anything else like that. Well, if he moves down to Fort Rice where, you know, there's not gonna be that much power and he can start, well, just start bringing in stuff also. So, you know, the person's gotta look at that too. And he, hey, well, you guys are the county and you guys can force it all the way. So that's, you know, that's, you know, that's another thing that should be brought up here. And, you know, and that's what I've been told, you know, they don't, you know... And, and I think, you know, if you guys can get the more power to do that to, cause, you know, there's, I mean, buildings put on, you know, streets down there and put on other people's property and stuff like that. Well, we can't do anything because it's been done already. It's there, you know. So, I mean, you guys, I think I try to get some power to straighten that stuff out. I mean, if I, when I buy a property or buy something, hey, you know, I check it out. Where are my lot corners at? You know, but, you know, when, years ago, they just plopped down stuff and, you know, who knows what kind of measurement system they had. And, you know, now, now we have to deal with it. And, you know, so I think something has to be done further down the road about that stuff also. So, I'd just like to bring that up. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi, I'm Sharon Ullman. I'm just gonna follow up and say, please help us enforce this stuff. We don't know how to do it, but we'd like our community to be safe, sound and secure, not full of rats, not full of junk. And just tell us how to do it. And you guys are the professionals, so help us. Thank you.
Thanks Sharon. Is there anybody else in the room? Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Natalie, you wanna switch to those online? If there's anybody online that would like to speak, you can just take yourself off mute and go ahead and talk. Okay, I'll do second to last call for the hearing, both online and in the room. Third and final call, and I will close. Jeez, Don, I just about gotta close.
Don Wise again, but, uh, again, I would like to say that the last two and a half
years I've been down there, this, this lot has never been mowed, the wormwood just keeps getting higher and higher. I can't believe a building inspector would actually let any of that material that's kinda stored in a open cube van, or wherever it is, you know, to be reused as a new building, I don't know, there might be something in an enclosed trailer, I'm not sure, but this lot has never been mowed, since I've been down there, and, uh, it's just, and from what I've heard locally, that it's, there's never been a car business, or anything legitimate type, sales-type business, performed down there, so I, that's the only other comment I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Okay, third and final call for the public hearing. And I will close the hearing.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Allen Kapi to the stand.
Or in the courtroom.
Yeah, I don't know, he might swear at me instead.
Chairman Kissed?
Yeah, Allen.
Commissioners?
Yeah. A question I wanna ask you, in the past, have you, in dealing with Ivan, have you had to deal with very many nuisance complaints and issues to where there's been a number of complaints about, you know, unkept lots, junk property, to where that there has been, your office had to issue notices and do different things over a period of time in dealing with that particular area?
I really can't recall off the top of my head, but one, also one thing, me up, being up here speaking, is Kevin O'Neill and, you know, George Gartner, they're all my cousins, so I'm, you know, related by blood to a lot of the people that are involved in this, and I kinda feel a reluctance to speak.
Mm-hmm.
Not trying to throw Chase Lingle under the bus, but Assistant State's Attorney Chase Lingle's here, maybe he could speak for the State's Attorney's Office.
Yeah, well, you know, there's a, you'd have to have a historical perspective to answer that.
Oh, okay.
You know, and I can go to the rhetorical perspective, Ivan had his, uh, you know, lost down there by the old Iverson Building.
Rats Bar?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's, there are times where, uh, we'd get complaints, and I had to been talking to Ivan, you know, follow up, and about how his, uh, his protocol or aesthetic view of his property was being handled.
Yes, you have institutional memory as well.
Yeah, well, I don't have any institutional memory of what happened after he, you know, left, uh, went to his premises elsewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Kapi?
Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, do you have something to add?
Yes, I do have a question. I was just wondering, on that 40-foot setback, um, you can't have a building there, but you put a bunch of edibles there?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want, no.
Okay, thoughts from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification, if I could, because I feel like it matters. Um, so in my staff report, I did, uh, what I'm trying to do is always convey as accurately as I can, um, the information that I collect and pull together. So, that comment was in the section, I was talking about public input or public comments, I was trying to reiterate the comments that I had received as accurately as I could put in a report. It's not my personal opinion, um, it was reflecting comments that I received. Um, in my analysis, there is no mention of any type of clientele, my analysis is just about, um, the zoning of the property. Um, and I guess to go back to the issue about stormwater, um, that is one of the many reasons why we have lot size minimums in the county for that type of lot, you know, for whether it's residential or commercial, um, so that you have room on the lot to accommodate natural geography and have not just the bare minimum amount of space, but a little bit of extra space for things that come up on site. Um, if this were a bigger lot, you could very easily move the building, you could very easily move the parking lot to accommodate, uh, stormwater runoff. Um, so that's one very good reason why we have lot size minimums. Um, the other factor here is, I can't, I'm not gonna tell anyone that they cannot apply. I can't tell anyone you shouldn't or can't apply. Um, but when we do go through a plating process, um, we have a long-form process for commercial zones, and, uh, the applicant will be required to submit a stormwater plan, um, you know, if they're putting a structure on there, so that we could assess, um, that stormwater issue that was brought up. And this property has not been platted, so that's why that question has not been answered. Um, so generally, we would usually want a plat first before, um, but a person can apply for a variance, you know, to ask to not plat, so, um, again, anyone can apply for what they would like, and we evaluate the merits of that application. So, those are just the comments that I would make before you go into your discussion.
Thanks, Natalie.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, maybe Natalie can help answer. Um, so, in regards to the water service, it's, it's probably not gonna happen anytime soon for rural water, so therefore, a well would need to be drilled.
Correct.
So, in thinking about the 100-foot drain field, and the fact that your well needs to be 100 feet away from that drain field, that very much leaves a limited space.
Yes.
For a well on this property.
Correct.
Um, it, we don't have anything, there's no, I'm trying to recall, but I don't think that there's any requirements on having a well within the setbacks.
No, and I think that they could have it in the setback.
Okay, but even still, it just leaves a very limited location.
Limited space, yeah.
And then now knowing about this drainage issue, that even limits it even further.
Even further, yes.
Okay, that answers my question.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Ivan, I have a couple of questions. I haven't listened to most of the comments here, I kinda gather, be a little facetious here, but you would not get the housekeeping good seal of approval from the people at Fort Rice down here. And my, my issue would be, you know, you have things, uh, there seems to be a concern of repetitive behavior in terms of how things would be kept up, how the, the orderly fashion would be, and how the buildings kept up the cars, and all that stuff, that it, that it's not going to be an attractive business, so to speak, that's the perception that's being displayed, so if you can maybe perhaps put some light on that perspective, and, and again, you know, we, how do you make it comparable? Because when things don't go right, and I know working up here with other nuisance abatements, things that we had with the planning and zoning, you turn it over to State's Attorney's Office, they got a lot of things to do, and it's, it's not an easy process. It takes a while, um, for them to get it going, and, and then, uh, it's just, it's just a real hassle when you have to go back and, and serve nuisance abatements and try to get things done, as well, at least, that is from my experience.
So, I need you to tell me, what's your direct question?
Well, the direct question is, uh...
Do you want me to comment on all these people that come up here?
No, I just wanted to, wanna...
I don't wanna do that.
No, that could be, I know what I wanna know is, is the lot, once you put in a building, is it going to be aesthetically, uh, appealing to...
The only reason...
To customers, or to business, as a business, you know, is, is going to be an appealing business for the community?
Yes, it's gonna be an appealing business for the community. And the only reason the other cars in the building looked like it did is because the county put a cease and assist, and I didn't do nothing, I left it set. And some of the comments up here are from customers I had at the bar that I had to kick out, farmer employees that I didn't like, and they come up and comment, I can't go on, I don't wanna go into that.
So, yeah, I do think...
The building is a beautiful building, and the reason that the one side is off, the doors is off, it's Menard's building, all new tin and stuff, and I'm putting it back up the same way if they approved the old structure. I have the old structure stored there and covered up. The tin is gonna be new, the insulation, the, the fire, uh, alarms, uh, everything is, everything is gonna be new. I take as much pride in anything, I've been in this business for 52 years. I know what it takes to sell. And, and they're talking about Fort Rice, I mean...
So, and I am, I'm gonna, I know you're kind of, you're, the question was thrown at you, but the public hearing is closed, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just kinda go off on one perspective without opening the back up.
No.
So, Dennis, unless you have a, I guess, any more specific questions for Ivan, I don't wanna open that back up.
Just more of a clarification as to what may be...
And I think that was answered, your perspective of what the future building...
And I have insurance and all my stuff down there, and there's never been a flood. And to my knowledge, there's never been a drainage problem. And home and engineering will take care of all that.
Yeah, that's, we're good, Ivan, yep. Okay, so, bringing it back to the commission, uh, you know, I guess I will build off some of the comments that were brought up. Uh, the southwest corner of the property is a delineated blue-lined stream. It does significantly inundate in the state's ND RAM modeling system, so indicators are there that there's likely drainage concerns in that portion of the property, unfortunately the portion that has the building shown on the site plan. However, I don't think that's ours to consider tonight. The question before this board, Natalie, I guess, tell me, if I'm wrong, what's largely bringing the variance is, or bringing this before us, is a variance to construct a building on a non-conforming commercial lot?
So, I guess, um, the variance would be for the, yes, the structure, um, but with the use attached.
Sure.
So, it would be a used car, um, sales business with this structure.
Sure.
And the parking lot.
And I guess I'm encouraging us to, as much as I think all this context is useful and we can consider it, uh, we don't typically consider or speculate on the future conditions of something, we have to look at what's in front of us to some extent, and what's been there in the past.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess I don't, we can't make a decision based on what he tells us.
Right.
The building is gonna look like.
Right, and I guess, that would, that was the other thing that I was gonna mention, um, that's important to mention, is, um, that when you allow a use to start, um, you are allowing anything that that use can become. So, whether that's an expansion of the use beyond what was described at the time that it was permitted, um, it could be a change in the use because the building could accommodate other kinds of uses. Um, it, when you have a structure and a location and a configuration, it invites, it, it just invites, you know, uses that fit that, um, that, uh, environment. So, that could be any number of uses that could fit in that environment. Um, and so, again, you do have to think about, once you allow that structure on a non-conforming lot, the total life of the structure, which I would imagine will exceed Mr. Ganji's lifetime, um, or that use being there that will, um, live beyond this owner. So, you have to think about if, if all those future uses of that building will be in the appropriate location.
So, I guess I will, I'll say, from my perspective, we've had a handful of, I guess I don't know if they've all been variances, but we've had discussions on this board dealing with non-conforming lots, currently, in some cases, currently undeveloped lots, trying to be replatted, and we've held, held pretty strongly to, uh, that minimum size. We have given some leeway, but it's been quite small, going back to, um, the stuff south of Fort Lincoln in the last year, within a couple tenths of an acre, and that threshold is lower at 65,000 square feet, rather than this, is this 80, is that what?
80,000, yeah.
80,000.
Yep.
So, and I'm speculating here, based on experience over the last couple of years, where we've had residential properties come in, asking for a variance to construct a residential property that's not conforming, and I don't think we've made such a significant exception in, in those decisions.
Right.
So, uh, in my mind, what this property was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, or even five years ago, we view it as it is today with today's standards, and that's, that's our minimum lot size. So, uh, I guess I'm struggling with that, we've, we've gone down a lot of rabbit holes in the discussion, but ultimately, it's a non-conforming lot, and I think we need a, a strong reason to make that exception, and, uh, I guess I don't, maybe my threshold for hardship is, is higher than the lot just being non-conforming and that being inconvenient. So, just open to thoughts from others.
I was just gonna say, I would agree, you know, it doesn't matter to me whether it's a used car lot or a lumberyard, it's too big of a building, too small of an area to accommodate any type of major commercial business.
Go ahead, Becky.
Well, I was just gonna carry on, um, I'm just kinda looking at my phone here, um, on the, okay, I think it's on the 40-setback easement there, is there a power line there? Or something? What's there? Looks like a power line or something. Like, right, right on the edge of the property line, on the, it would be the west side, next to 1806.
Uh, there's an answer in the audience, Becky, that there's a Morgren Sioux line.
Okay, is it above ground, though? Is that what you said?
Yes, yep, above ground.
Okay. Okay, so, he, there must be some sort of right-of-way deals where you can't just start storing stuff underneath it, can you?
Usually...
I mean, it looks like it's right on the property line.
So, um, Becky, I'll, I'll take that one.
Okay.
There, there not being a general utility easement on this property because it was never properly platted, um, that would be, if an easement exists, which I would imagine it does, that would be Morgren Sioux's private easement to enforce, um, under whatever conditions, um, were in that easement when it was executed and recorded. So, that's up to them to enforce. But yes, that's a good point, we would, I mean, um, someone should find out what the terms of that easement are before the, a business would, you know, begin putting items under there, or structures, or temporary structures.
Yes, I would agree with that, too, because, you know, if we say, oh, it's all right if everything goes forward, then Morgren Sioux goes, well, we didn't know anything about this here, um, and then we just got another situation that it's like, oh, okay, we should've thought of that, too, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Other, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, just, maybe this is a little more of a rhetorical question, but, you, and you can grant a variance, but you can also put conditions?
Yes. You can put as many conditions on it as you think are necessary.
Well, of course, not all conditions would be acceptable. What about the conditions, say, okay, you want, you wanna have a car sales, the cars you have there have to be operable. You're not in the car repair business, so you can't have a bunch of inoperable vehicles. Can you say, okay, if you're gonna be in a car sales business, you have to have operable vehicles to sell, not inoperable, not vehicles that don't run, and those type of things.
So, generally, we want to regulate what we can enforce.
Exactly.
It is extraordinarily difficult to put conditions like that, even, and we do have some of those provisions in our code elsewhere, in terms of long-term vehicle storage, or maximum numbers of cars on, you know, ag and residential lots. That is extremely difficult, if not almost impossible, to enforce when you have things that are moving, you know, and documenting, and maybe it moved when you're trying to document or whatnot. So, I guess my recommendation would be to envision any and all things that could happen or be present in, under the conditions of a used car lot being operational, and expect for those things to just be normal. But yes, technically speaking, the county can put whatever conditions on a variance that they think are necessary to shape the form that that use will take on that property.
Yeah, I was just trying to establish a scope of authority here.
Yes, yes, you can, you could do that.
Okay.
I was just going to say, maybe I'll share my thoughts a little bit, I agree with you, Jesse, in that the lot size is just not, it's just not there, but I also do think that this property needs to go through the plating process, because we don't know for sure where those boundaries are, we don't know for sure where that right-of-way is, we don't know for sure if it is actually .77 acres, or if it's .67 acres. We're not sure. The hydrology would also be addressed at that time as well, plus I all do, I do think that water supply with the hydrology and the right-of-way and the drain field location is going to be an issue for this property, so...
Anybody like to make a motion? Or more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, so I understand, Marie, you're saying there's, there's not enough here, so knowingly give us all the things we need.
Correct.
So, well, I'm going to walk that back, perhaps, so, I mean, I think if we are comfortable with the building on a very non-conforming lot, prior to formalizing an approval, we would want it to go through the plating process.
Before we'd even consider it.
I don't, at least my perspective is, I don't think we need this to go through the plating process to consider the use on a lot of approximately .8 acres, would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with that statement, too, but I do also think on the other side that this pro, this property needs to go through the plating process regardless.
But we, we don't mandate auditors' lots to be platted unless they go through, or unless they come through this, right? So, I guess all I'm saying is, we make this decision, if it came back in another form, we would want it platted, right? I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
But we can't, we don't ask them to be platted.
And, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Tomac, I guess what I would say is, we have gone through a number of discussions on this board, and we really do not want to legitimize lots that are too small to accommodate uses, you know, that really shouldn't be there on that small of a lot, so if you go through a plating process, you'd have to be granting a variance in assigning that, in, in accepting that plat size, that lot size. So, I mean, it does make sense that they're requesting a variance as opposed to going through a plating process, because I think you first have to answer the question, is this even the right-sized lot for this use? Because if it is not, then you just make that decision as opposed to asking them to go through a plating process, but...
But...
If, if they were going to have this use and that was approved, then definitely one of the conditions should probably be go through a plating process first.
Yes.
Yes.
She puts it in way better words than I do.
Got a bunch of engineers up there.
Yeah, we think too much on the math.
Any other thoughts or motions?
I just have one more question. Okay, there's a 20-foot, 24-foot driveway, if you go back to that map. Is, is that the existing one that's there, let's see, I was getting directions, I'm stuck here on the south side.
Yeah, Becky, I think that, that's approximately the existing driveway location and size.
Okay, so then, basically, um, okay, those must be, they're 19-by-9 foot areas, that must be where he's planning on storing the vehicles, right?
Yep, those are the parking stalls.
Okay, so then he's going to be basically stored on the road, so then, then, I guess, I, I don't know, I'm just looking, it just seems like small when you start looking at how it looks, because I have this program where I can see, you know, it's like a maps thing. I mean, it just seems like, I don't understand, I don't know, it just seems strange how you're going to have to go around this way and then that way, I don't know, I can't explain it.
Yeah, I think the site plan would...
Doesn't flow.
Needs, it needs some work.
Work, yeah.
The site plan does, but I also don't think that, I guess, yeah, we are considering the, the overall use, but...
Right, but it would probably need some...
I know.
It would need, it would need some tweaking, yeah, for sure.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and then, so then, the road goes all the way through to the Eisenbarth, so would they, is that plan on being used then?
You're talking, Becky, the through road to the north, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes, to the north. I know you guys probably talked about it.
I think, I think that the plan is that that would go away.
So, okay, okay, so, if I, ah, man, it just doesn't seem there's enough room to move stuff around, I, I don't know, I, hmm, you know, if it was summer, I would have walked it or something, but when it's cold, I didn't want to. So, I don't know, just my thoughts, so, sorry.
Thanks, Becky.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the Board's knowledge, there is a used surface, you know, it's a trail, it's been worn, I just want to be clear, that is not a right-of-way of any kind, it is a trail that doesn't have any legal standing other than whatever one would determine in a court of law as far as adverse possession, or whatever the term is, for having been used so long, it was never a platted right-of-way.
It wouldn't work very well with this drain field anymore.
No.
Okay, other thoughts from the Board or motions?
And there is a suggested motion in your packet, if anyone needs to reference, get some ideas.
Variance, as we all know, a variance, as we all know, is, is designed to help someone move forward with the project, if you will. Based on our policies, we have guidelines on what we allow for a variance. So, when this issue came forward, my thought process on what does our policy say about a variance? You make a decision on this thing, and then, and then, in people's minds, it becomes a precedence. So, for me, it's, it's a more black-and-white picture, it's, you're asking for a variance, but what does our policy say? So, essentially, offering a variance is for an existing structure already, something that's there, that they, they want to extend the boundary, if you will. Then we get into the next point, and the key point is, and we've all talked about it now, and that is the, the size of the lot Mr. Ganji's looking at and the structure to put in there far exceeds what our policy says. And that's where I'm at. So, that's why I will make the motion. I move to deny the variance to allow the construction of a building for a used car sales business, and, I can't read that, Jesse, on a non-conforming lot for the, on a non-conforming lot, period.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, because I don't know if the mic picked up the reason, could you maybe reiterate your reason that it was too large of a use for the lot size, was that the reasoning?
That was the reason.
Okay, I just wanted to get it on the...
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Correct.
Good with that, then, Natalie.
That's fine, I just needed it to be in the recording.
Everybody else is clear on, on the motion? Is there any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, I'll call the roll. Roar.
Yes, to maintain that continuity on variances.
Tomac.
I agree with the motion.
Wald.
Yes.
L.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries.
That's all our items.
Okay. A motion to adjourn, so a move?
All second.
Motion and a second, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.